I have to follow by the on place meeting exactly seven five that I could notice this meeting was provided on January eleventh, two thousand twenty four by publication of the American Express Times and Democratic Democrat and by post news said notice in this running on the same date. Mr. Baylor?
Here.
Mr. Bean?
Here.
Mr. Kinnick?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Grayberry?
Here.
Mr. Penelope?
Here. We all stand for the flag, please. Question. Do we probably publish what you said? And one way. On their. It is a part of everything that just down for all. Okay, Shannon, let's start with you and what budget discussion that we are going to have tonight.
Um. Well, not much.
Now, we know that we have to meet with the auditors yet, so we can't even really talk final anything.
Correct.
So what new information tonight are you bringing to the table?
Um, I don't have anything new. I know Joe and the French gave me their request, which I still have to put in my spreadsheet. I know Lisa gave me some things, but I don't think we have anything new. Just, um, I believe we have all the numbers that you need to sit with the auditors on Saturday.
Okay, so hopefully our next budget meeting, we can get right down to it and know what the tax levy will be.
We should be, yep. Paul, I did input in meeting packets if you guys reviewed that was an email like a sort of a reexplanation, a reminder to us that Andrew put together.
Yeah, this one right here, right?
And it's just regarding, you know, the current uh, debt that we have in terms of the bonds that are out there, open space. And the new one, just, just to give you guys a refresher course, I know it seems, you know, during the budget season, we're reminded about all this stuff, and you know, we'll stand, but a year later, it's a little hard to recall. Not that many have had any questions related to that, but I'm gonna make sure that 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 information.
And the analysis here, the open space reserve. Well, it says two thousand sixteen and seventeen of the new numbers are on the back here.
Um.
Or no?
I think that
That's capital improvement. So it says, see that?
So I
Is that really a two thousand twenty four number?
So what I, what I believe Shannon should know better, but what I believe is that, as you remember, last year when we were doing that new bond, we rolled some of the others over.
Yeah.
Uh, and it was a better, it was a better deal to do it that way. So I, when I read this, I was thinking that this was, um, when that open space bond oval uh, was on its own. Um, Shannon.
Did you pick this out, Lisa, for them?
Yep, they have all.
Yeah, it should be on your schedule for the bond pay down, so.
Is the open spaces on?
Yeah, open spaces on, they're all on there. All the ones that we owe.
I think that that, um, that sheet specific to open spaces, like a holdover, um, you know, one of the spurts taking ass.
Okay.
Not correct.
So Shannon, what is the, uh, open space account? What have we got in there then?
Um, I haven't checked, but I can.
Yeah, and then what interest rate are we getting on that one?
I have to check the bank. Yeah, I don't think it's changed. I think, so obviously the more money in there, the more we have, but I think it's at three or four, I think.
I think the interest rate sticks up a little bit in the last couple of days. So when do you have a review with the, uh, with the banks?
Um, I can email them at any time to request that.
Yeah.
We have been rolling over the bond amount, uh, that CD on a month on a basis since, you know, that time initial six months wraps. And that interest rate is still very favorable.
Five or so.
Five and a half.
Yeah.
Still very favorable, so.
Let's hope we start using it soon.
The plan, the plan will be that when and if this, you know, the project gets rolling, that hopefully I think then it'll be able to provide us with a pretty concise schedule for when we're gonna need what. And then we can just sort of lessen the amount, but have the CD rolled for a period of time.
Okay.
And keep that interest building. Uh, the other item that I had shared everybody is the not so great news from the court.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's in your packets. As you guys may recall, I think we historically had that budget line at around fifteen thousand. We had, um, a bad year. I think that was COVID, early COVID. No tickets, that sort of thing. There wasn't a lot going on, and we ended up with a pretty big deficit. Um, then very favorable last year, I think that was a seven thousand dollar. Difference, which was great. So we lowered our budget item, and tonight we have to take action to transfer some money to cover. Um, there was a, a true up cost of twenty eight thousand and change this year, unfortunately.
So the more tickets we wrote, and if she's not here, I'm seeing it. No, yeah, uh, writing tickets don't necessarily ease the burden. It creates labor on the court side. You know, so.
Did we write more tickets, do we know?
Um.
Yeah, we'll have to see if which comes in with those zero.
Well, I was gonna say, yeah, I think it might have actually been it, but that's the whole downside to court costs not covering court costs. And in most municipalities, that's a problem. I don't want to say it's a problem throughout the entire state because there are lots of municipalities that make money off their court system. Uh, that doesn't seem to be the case around here. Um, it costs most people, whether it be at Bloomsbury, Harmony, or whatever, you're adding into it. And that's just because the system doesn't allow court costs to actually cover court costs. And until that gets fixed by the legislature, and I suppose we should be opining a letter to our legislators as such, that they, that's something that needs to be fixed.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Mike, wouldn't you agree on that one?
Yes, and it's only getting worse because the state takes more and more of the revenue. Well, I don't know if you can even call it revenue, but, um, yeah, it's, I was talking to municipal court judge the other day, and it's only going to get worse.
Only going to get worse. So.
State takes the money and doesn't really do anything to help.
Right.
Stay in the court system.
So. So with that being said, we'll, uh, we'll have a, a conversation on it and eventually direct Mike to send a letter from the town. Actually, I don't even know if Mike has to do it. I think we can probably do it as a town, right?
Sure.
You know, and send it something to our legislators stating that that's probably one of the biggest problems that we are currently facing in our budget process dealing with courts. I mean, tickets are somewhat necessarily necessary evils, but at the same rate, they've got to balance the books. So at least not cost the taxpaying residents something. But I've been telling that one for a couple of years, so. So Mike, can we tell them, hey, just give tickets to the real bad offenders? Or, I mean, really, we can't say it here, but you know. Um, but it's costing us money every time they write a ticket.
I don't think that's true. I don't, I think if the chief was here to speak to that, I don't think that's accurate. I think ticket, ticket numbers versus, you know, our offset is.
Probably no, is, I mean, the only way to get to a court is, you know.
Yeah, but you can't negate it because there's a fixed number at the court. Um, and actually, I think it was a hundred and one thousand dollars is our share of the court.
Right.
Whether we write tickets or not.
Correct.
So we, the revenue at least needs to match that, but in this particular case, we're twenty eight thousand dollars in the hole. So there's.
With no, with no tickets and no action, we owe a hundred and one thousand dollars, so.
So, um, there, there's a balance there, but the system's wrong and it needs to be repaired, but it can't be repaired on our level.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, anything else we want to talk about budget, Shannon, Lisa?
Oh, nothing at all.
Yes, Mike.
Good, good.
Just the recent.
Oh, yeah, we did get.
That's what I was just gonna do.
I did see that, that we need to include that into our budget discussions for this year.
Yeah, I, I brought hard coffee.
Bob, Lisa provided this one.
Oh, I think, oh, Lisa, good job, Lisa. Very nice. Everybody got one?
Shannon, you have. Yeah, I don't have it in front of me right this second, but I got one. No, no, because it's in my bag.
It's, it's a there's a shortfall as there always is. And again, we don't have to do anything this year, as we know. Um, we can wait till next year. But we asked for seventy thousand and we got seventy thousand, which is almost unheard of, that we got as much as we asked for. However, there's always a contributory amount that we put in the grant application because you get extra points if the town is gonna put in some of their own money. So in any event, it was basically eleven thousand dollars was the shortfall.
All right, that, but the eleven thousand is really the soft cost from engineering and inspections? Or is that including?
Engineering inspections.
Right, right, right.
That's the total, that's the total nut, if you will.
Right.
Uh, we, it came into eighty one thousand on rounded off.
Okay.
And we got seventy, so eleven thousand.
So with that being said, that, that's kind of a positive thing. And so that, but actually, Joe, you and I were talking, and, and I don't have the numbers here in front of me. Um, the, uh, storm that rolled through that damaged Dricklin Hill Road and, uh, Dumont Road. Uh, there were, we applied for FEMA, FEMA money, was it, Joe?
Yes.
And they gave us some, but we have to pay twenty five percent of it?
Now, yeah, it's a seventy five, twenty five percent.
Percent.
For any of the flood damages.
Right, and that twenty five percent is around thirty eight?
What, from, from the two quotes I got from last year yet, and we'll have to, and these will have to go out to bid where we need thirty thousand six.
Sorry.
So it might even be a little bit more, um, those pens or
On the new quote, right.
Stuff like that.
Do we want to get them put out pretty quick, though? I mean, is the state in any hurry for us to burn up?
No, no, there's, there's, there's no, there's no hurry. Once the application has been made, it's when the work can be done.
Okay, so we, but we should probably be putting it out to get.
We should be starting to get ready, but, but once again, I'm sure the asphalt plans don't have prices.
Prices yet.
Don't get closer.
So maybe next month set about for bid?
They'll, they'll be ready to go and see where they're at.
So between Mike's, between the eleven, twelve there and the potential for that, we need fifty thousand dollars for, uh, fly copy this year. And as we all know, fifty is six thousand dollars less than a point. So there's gonna be some kind, now Mike's project can be put off for a year.
Yes, it can. But does the cost go up in a year?
It, well, sure.
It certainly, right, normally, yes. In fact, Joe, the, um, the twenty twenty four co-op numbers came out for, I don't know if you know, but the, for asphalt, it's seventy eight fifty a ton. So that went up.
Of course, no, of course, I gotta try and get them to do the work. That's not their scope, especially with Duma having to go to the sub bay.
Oh, well, there's no, not at the Duma. I'm familiar with the Dumas, yeah.
Duma, Manlos Hollow.
You can't.
Hollow, they probably would have done, but it's not enough work for them just to do that. So that's why we have to go out the other way, or that would have been done already. We would have walked away.
Good point. So seventy eight fifty a ton this year versus what was it last year? Six, was it sixty seven?
Well, I thought it was around sixty eight, yeah, yeah.
Okay, sixty eight.
Yeah, 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 right around there.
Yeah, so one up ten bucks.
Ten bucks.
About, which, which, that's a big increase. It's normally not ten dollars a year.
Yeah.
Uh, but, I mean, I, I wouldn't, I mean, I don't know, but I can't imagine it going up another ten dollars for next year. That'd be close to ninety bucks a ton.
Well, you could say that, but
I, I.
And our, our, our battle with petroleum companies in this country is not good. You know, and that's where one of the largest increases in the private sector are coming from. You know, America still runs on diesel. Petroleum isn't a lot of products, period. So those products are all gonna go up. And there's no real way to, to stop that at this stage of the game. So I wouldn't rule out ten dollars. Especially if people continue to pay it.
Again, that's why my opening comments, when I would ask about next year's projections, I was like, well, everyone probably should just shouldn't say that for that very reason. Because it, it could be.
It could be, yeah. But that's just one of the battles we have to do.
You need the drill.
Uh?
Drill more?
Yeah. You didn't hear that from me.
I just said drill, I didn't go in.
Oh, boy.
We, we certainly need to open something up. Okay, so is that good for a budget conversation for what we had on the plate today? Lillian, we're good?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yep.
Okay, all right, let's move on. Uh, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, I would like a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
I'll make that motion for a second.
All right, roll call, Lisa?
Uh, Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kinnick?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Yes.
Um, has everybody had a chance to look at the treasury reports? And if so, or is there anything that needs to be pulled?
Nothing needs to be pulled, but Joe, um, just a couple of, uh, line items here. DPW, uh, parts and supplies, Ross body and framework, just a little over seventeen thousand, what?
Body, bodywork to the, the collision work to the truck that was in the wreck in October.
Okay.
That's insurance claim.
And we just got that money.
Yeah, okay. We've been reimbursed, we have insurance claim, been reimbursed all, but probably the thousand dollar.
Yep.
Okay, uh, janitorial supplies, this might be for you, Lisa. Seven hundred and thirty eight dollars. Is that a month? Is that a? Yeah, that's not part of my bill list.
That, that would be, that would be me, um, just, uh, getting the supplies. We're running low for last year. Paper towels, paper, and it, you noticed in the, uh, in the bathrooms, I went to touchless hand soap dispenser.
Okay.
Uh, we'll save money with, in the long run, buying soap.
And one more, interim auditing, uh, do we anticipate that twelve thousand four hundred and seventy five dollars? At an increase of, but.
No, I believe that that is just a partial payment for our work on the audit. That's all done by, uh, by professional contract every year.
Okay, great. Any more questions or comments? All right, Lisa?
I think we didn't get a motion.
Oh, wow, I can, I'll make a motion to approve the treasury. I'll second it.
Thank you, Lisa.
Uh, Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kinnick?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, can I get a motion to accept the tax collector's tax and sewer report?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any questions or comments? Lisa?
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Finnick?
Yes. Okay, um, we're gonna hold off on the police department report because the chief is not feeling well. He may or may not be here. Uh, Joe, anything you want to talk about on your public works report?
Well, just if anybody has any questions. Started to snow, so we've been a little busy, a little bit more busy than last year. Um, Christmas tree, uh, collection, about seventy trees were dropped and chipped, uh, on the two Saturdays.
So that about norm, Joe, from late?
Yeah, seventy to a hundred on that area.
Joe, you had a Zoom meeting, um, been concerning fifty seven, but the work on fifty seven and Low Pat. But there was also a comment, Route twenty two dash thirty one paving. Can there be, can you be a little bit more specific on, on what that was about?
Oh, in there, they, the state sent out a weapon art to all of the, and I didn't even sit in on it.
Okay.
So I don't know if they're doing detour routes for it or planning for it, but they included all the municipalities in that area of, and how it may have, but, but I said, I, I think it changes.
Did you see anything on that project at all? Because every, I'm under the impression, everything from exit three, the past, Easton Phillipsburg Honda curving sidewalks where allowable crosswalks, um, and the paving is gonna be milled. I don't think they said there was any widening going on, but it's all gonna be replaced. Oh, wow. Um, but it was a pretty extensive project. And it might even go further down than Easton Phillipsburg Honda from seventy eight, from basically seventy eight all the way down.
Boy.
Yeah, yeah, right. Hopefully a lot of it will be done at night, but we don't know.
You're right.
Right. Well, that concrete work never gets done at night. All right. Uh, Lisa, the clerk's report, is there something you'd like to go over with that?
Uh, there were just a few things, uh, to take action on, uh, not, doesn't have to be done tonight. Um, but if we could approve, Mike just reviewed the business registration. I did sort of like a little cover letter and a little sample registration form. That is the ordinance that we had to adopt for the state requiring now my office gets to solicit for, and we track them, um, business insurance. But not just for businesses, but it's also for landlords, for tenants. It's, it's gonna be, uh.
And are we charging a fee for that?
A big job. Uh, we, early discussions were that we were not going.
Not going to.
Um, I just said to Mike, you know, usually towns are implementing a fee to offset the cost for the additional work for somebody to do it. Uh, we're still generating our list, so that might be something that we have to implement.
To talk about.
But this is just sort of a drive.
Only reason I bring that up, Low Pat Con Township is charging a hundred and fifty dollars.
Most towns that I've talked to, if there's any kind of volume to it, it's like an additional job. They're creating like a stipend in there.
Right.
You know, their salary resolution, and then those, those fees should offset those salaries so that there's not a cost to everybody is. I mean, Mike do anything to add? That's, that's kind of.
No, I mean, you're allowed to charge over your administrative cost, so.
My, my big question is, you know, when we send this information out to Lowe's, Don't Lowe's, ShopRite, does, does it get lost in their inbox? Are they aware about it? Are we gonna have to send people to educate the businesses per se? Um, I personally know when my wife received one in Low Pat Con Township, she was mad.
Yeah.
Because on top of some of the other fees that we're already paying in Low Pat Con, that we don't pay here in Greenwich, um, she was not a, a happy business owner at that particular time.
Yeah.
But I don't know when, if, if they get into the inbox, again, target any of them.
Right.
You know, how is somebody going to really know how to look at that?
And implementing this, once everybody is aware, they're gonna be aware, but implementing this is gonna be a big undertaking, and there's gonna be cost of mailing and however we, you know, tackle it. So it's really just for information purposes, there is, is there a deadline to?
I'm sure there is.
June, I'm thinking, it's, I think it's like, it's.
So we can't sit on it for long?
Can't sit on it for long.
All right.
More state mandate?
State mandate, we know way to pay for it.
So what I'm doing, I'm working with, uh, Jen Caravelli, our tax assessor right now, because there's different ways that she can utilize her software and do a sort so that we can try to, um, you know, get a definitive list. And then based upon that list, I'll, you know, talk it over with Lillian, I guess preliminarily, and maybe next, next month have a, an idea if we can do it without charging a fee or if we're gonna have to, um, add something to it, add something to it. Um, yeah, I guess that that's it. The only thing, I don't know if we put it separately on the agenda, but we do need to approve the Muskinecon.
My goodness, I saw that here, yeah.
We want to do a vote on that, um, something that we do every year. Uh, they're, they're great partners for us and help us get our storm water compliance, which is huge, so. I endorse that.
Right, so let's make a, a motion to authorize the payment for a renewal of membership of five hundred dollars to the Muskinecon watershed. Want to get a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Any questions, comments? Lisa?
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kinnick?
Oh, yes.
And, um, this is gonna be.
Yes.
We're not forced to do anything with the lead based stuff yet? Or?
Not yet. We actually, uh, as you might recall, we, we are contracting.
Yeah, I was gonna say somebody reached out, right, 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 right.
So, uh, they, again, same thing, we're putting together that list so that they can send letters out to any affected.
And I guess we can bring this up now, too. Um, it, it was gonna come up at some point, so let's do it right now. Uh, the dioxin contamination, um, we know that we have to get a bond and will be paid back by the DEP after we pay whoever does it and all that good kind of stuff, but there's been some recent issue, um.
I'd like to bring that up in executive.
You want to bring that up in executive? Okay, all right, let's move that to executive. All right, Lisa, what else we got?
That's it.
All right, Lisa?
Um, the court report was, um, still forthcoming. Um, I don't know that Tammy received anything today to throw in her, oh, no, yeah, we did, we did get that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought I saw the floor before here.
That was a little late. And then I think the ACO report is.
ACO report says no calls reported. So I'd like to make a motion to.
Before, do I have a couple of?
Okay.
Or Lisa, any additional contractors other than what was provided on this list?
Uh, actually, there were two more that are the right new. I had a note to bring in here. Uh, there were two more that, um, were sent to the package today. So that's a really good response.
Yeah, quite a, uh.
A lot of interest.
Oh, in the municipal building?
Okay.
How many do you have at the moment? Got to go, but approximately, you don't have to give me any. Over twenty.
Over twenty?
Yeah.
Wow, wow, okay.
Two more today.
That should be good.
That's great.
That's great, right?
Yes, it is. Oh, terrific.
Yeah.
Okay. We've never heard any of them, but then again, I'm not in the construction business, you know. But Mike, you're, uh, more than welcome to look at the list here. The, I'd love to, isn't that apparently twenty bidders? That's tremendous. Well, you don't know if you're gonna get twenty things, but.
Right, right.
But twenty bidders that have they bid is really a tremendous.
All right, okay. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to accept the, the department's, uh, reports.
I'll make that motion.
One second. Questions, comments, we're riding through that. Go ahead, Lisa.
Uh, Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kinnick?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Yes.
All right, committee reports, let's start with Lily down there on far left.
The historic committee met on Monday, and they thought that they had brought something to the spots in reference to how many benches that they can put in the park behind us or Thomas Stewart Park. I had thought that we allowed them the last two, making an exception for that, but moving forward that they would have to go to open space first, then us, but they also thought that they had put together a, and I'm gonna ask Lisa, a requirement, or we put some requirements that would need to be made, allowing someone to put a bench because they wanna do yet another bench. Um, and I'm sorry, I forgot for who, because we were talking about so many different things the other night, but that was one of them. I didn't, I thought we, they needed to go to open space.
I recall, and I'm sure.
I don't recall, but I, but that is certainly the process.
I can, I can, I can go back, and I believe that we even added possibly something, um. I know that we did the ordinance prohibiting anything with a plaque, um, several years ago, and then I think we were making an exception, like, like you said. And I think there was some discussion that they would try to develop sort of like criteria that had to be met in order to be eligible. Uh, and I think that it was decided that was too problematic. Like, how do you decide the impact that somebody had? Do they have to live here for twenty five years? What if somebody had a great impact in ten years? And as I recall, it got too complicated to actually develop that process. So I agree with you. I thought that we went back to, there was still nothing in Thomas Stewart Park, but in Reinhardt Park, they would go through the process with open space, and then they got my body. I can find those notes. I think that was about a year and a half ago. I could look it up.
The other thing was that signpost that is with Joe.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they thought that all the ideas that the committee had, either Thomas Stewart, the new building, not having it just back here somewhere else would be a great idea. So they were okay to open for that. Um, the way rather for that. Um, that might have been the closest, uh, that they had acquired.
I'm going back, yeah, yeah.
So, and that was it. And so they had.
I kind of like to see that mile marker post at the new building.
Me too.
Yeah.
I think that would be nice.
Yeah, see those things around.
But yeah, that's, as long as Joe has no problem keeping it for us.
That looks fine.
That was it.
All right, Bill, you have the next?
Uh, yeah, school board, um, not much going on. I believe there's, there's down another member, so they're gonna be going out looking to people, you know, advertising, you know, on their site. We have a school board, uh, school board, well, school board election on the, I think it's thirteenth of March, the twelfth of March. And I believe she's been sending out some emails to have people go and. The twelfth of March, and I believe she's been sending out some emails to have people go and walk through the buildings and. Get a better understanding of the needs that are needed over in these two buildings, which there are many. Other than that, Mike, I gave you a copy of the comment. That we've added to their, um, and I know Bob's series is, well, that's something that needs to be taken up. You know, with the school board, and I'm not, whatever they want to do, put in their public comment is fine, but my question to you. Mike, is there something that we need to do on our open public, you know? Do we need to make a comment like that?
No, because the chairman of the meeting has the right to control the meeting, so if somebody is out of line or whatever, or, you know. Cursing, they can have them removed from the meeting, so ultimately, the chairman of the meeting has ability. You know, my own personal opinion is reading this, it almost looks like a veiled threat, like you could be subject to.
Yeah, I mean, it's like almost a Miranda right, it's saying, you know, well, the last sentence is.
There are towns that have adopted like ordinances with procedure and meetings, but, but like I said, there's, and there's a whole slew of cases on this. You know, the chairman, whoever's chairing the meeting has to maintain order, so, you know, you warn somebody, you know, you just treat people the way you'd wanna be treated. And then if they're unruly or whatever, then ultimately you can have them removed from the, so you have that right without.
But the, but the last sentence, it says, if speakers are uncertain of the potential legal ramification of their comments. The board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. It's kinda like anything you say can and will be used against you in a court of law, you know? Yeah, so, look, I guess it's intimidating, you know, but. You know, in all my years going to school board meetings, being on the school board years ago, sitting on this stage three different times. You know, I've never seen a need for it, you know?
Well, I've never seen anything like this, any public meeting and, you know, we represent a number of municipalities, so. I guess they would say, we're trying to be helpful to warn people that they could be sued and that what they're saying is not protected speech necessarily. The public meeting, which I, I kind of would expect that, you know, normal person would understand that, but. Um, ultimately, like I said, if somebody's disruptive or unruly, they could be removed from the meeting, so, um, and. Listen, if somebody starts making statements that go beyond, uh, the chair of the meeting, can always say, you know what, just for your own protection, you might wanna. But, um, like I said, I'm sure they would say if asked that they're just doing this to try to protect the people from themselves, but. I mean, ultimately, and like I said, I've seen a few towns adopt, you know, rules of decorum, which were basically exactly what I'm saying, which is that you have to be respectful. And everything else, but at the end of the day, if they're not being respectful, you don't need an ordinance to have them removed from the meeting.
Right.
And you hope it would never, uh, come to that, but.
I don't know, there's been a lot of activity, you know, throughout the state, various, you know, school boards, you know, North Hundred and Hundred and Central, but. Hopefully it'll stay east of us.
You know, what, what the public should be more worried about is the stuff that gets posted on social media, you know, I think the stuff I see there versus what people say in public meetings. You know, pales in comparison, let's say publicly, so, but. Yeah, a lot of angry people out there, so, like I said, I'm sure they would say that, well, we're just doing this so the people are aware of it. If they're gonna say something that might be controversial or. And, and Mike, one. I hate to be the apologist for this. Thanks, Mike. Yeah.
So you've seen the progress of what's going on over at, on Dumont for the affordable housing. Give me a guesstimate of when you think residents might be, uh, able to start renting. Cause I know that's a big concern of the school board, you know, is it gonna hit us this year? I mean, we're already in February. Do you anticipate, you think maybe there can be some buildings up before the end of the year where?
Though, there'll be, there'll be buildings that are certainly under construction and pretty far along.
Right.
Whether you're gonna have a resident in Greenwich, living at that development by the end of twenty twenty-four.
Right.
Before you know, we're gonna be in March already.
Right.
That's a, boy, that's tough though. I mean, maybe a couple units and that would be very aggressive and, and, and optimistic.
Right.
You know, answer, if you wanna call that.
Cause didn't they originally say twelve to fourteen months? And are they gonna complete the project or are they gonna complete a building and rent the building out while other buildings are still being built?
The, well, they will be renting out, they're gonna, yes, absolutely, yeah.
So, well, remember, they still, those residents have to be vetted by the state, they gotta keep the system in trend, which.
Yeah, right.
I know people that are building stuff now who have not been impressed with the speed at which those are being processed.
Okay, so it's definitely gonna affect their twenty-four, twenty-five school budget. You know?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so from July first through June thirty at the twenty twenty-five, we will see some students coming, yeah.
I can't imagine the, the way that you would not see it.
Okay, so yeah, through that, that budget school year, so they're working on their twenty-four, twenty-five now, so.
I did get an updated, uh, estimate from our planner Kendra today. It is on my desk, it's not out here, but I, I believe it was forty-nine point one for this development.
Forty-nine point.
Is the estimate based on the room size and.
Right.
The data that they have.
Which is a lea, well, a little bit, and it's a bunch higher than what was originally discussed, right, around seventeen higher. Probably not far off from that, yeah. Was thirty, thirty-three, yeah. Sixty, sixty-five total.
Imagine if they're all high school kids now, so.
Right, right, we don't know if they're paid through eight or high school. You know, so. So Mike, you mentioned about the process of qualifying people, people have asked me, stop me at ShopRite, how do they get on the list for the homes in Greenwich Township? So. They have to know that we don't, I was just talking to Shannon about that, so you can't give any preference to your own residents, they all have to go through Trent. So you don't know where the housing is gonna be available, or so they, they have to go through Trent and we have no control over that. Um, and then they give us eligibles, you know, they give us a list of, or give the person renting, uh, the list of eligibles off the list. And then they just work their way down the list, so.
Eligible projects, you know?
Oh, okay. And how do people get on that list in Trent? They have this, I, I could get you the website, but they have to. Income requirements and everything else, so, I mean, that's the bad thing about it, is you can't even take care of people who need affordable housing that are your own residents, so. Um, you gotta take the state. Well, I remember that was one of the big arguments, well, we're gonna get people from Bergen County coming up, and I'm like, well, who's gonna really come up here to rent? To have a minimum wage job i- in, in, in Elizabeth, you know, so I would like to think that, but we'll have, but that's for somebody else's. Uh, to.
That has tried that number in Trenton and they just said, we're, we're not thinking any names now, so if you can get me that. Give me that email site and then I'll.
As, as I recall, at the very early time when we started that meeting, there was a waiting list for our area of already fifteen hundred people. Two, two and a half years ago, so I don't know where that, that group has gone, or is that still part of? But that was one of the first conversations that they, well, who's coming? Well, there's a waiting list of fifteen hundred eligible, so. And that was, you know, like I said several years ago.
So what I got from Kendra, if you guys would like, the update is, um, this is based on the parameters established, I guess, at Rutgers in, uh, two thousand eighteen. But the estimate is that for Ingraham, there are ten one-bedroom units, that's gonna produce eight point eight students. Uh, thirty-six two bedrooms, which will produce fifteen point eight, and then twenty-three bedrooms, which they anticipate will. Create twenty-four point six, so we end with forty-nine point two as an estimate.
Well, and at the end, we had to add at least three, I believe, three bedrooms to get our. Yeah. Our eligibility up, that kind of, which is why that number got skewed.
Uh, you, you have a good memory of that. Yeah, 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 there's.
Go to all these meetings or not.
Me and you both, Lisa got you.
Can you forward that to Tina? Okay, and one final thing, um, I don't know if you guys saw, but NJ dot com posted the wealthiest communities in New Jersey. We're ranked number sixty-seven, okay, there's only, uh.
Out of five, sixty-five, right?
Right, uh, there's only one town in a hundred and county that's higher than us, which would be Tewksbury. The average income in this town is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Oh, wow, that's gone up since, uh, one forty-eight, I thought we were.
That's up to a hundred and sixty-eight according to this darn ledger, and. I can, one of the benefits of bringing in a hundred and twenty-nine units, it will lower.
Yeah, yeah.
That because it really affects our school funding. They're gonna say, look, there's, you know, there's number sixty-seven in the state, you know, so.
Well, I've heard that the, the formula that they use is they, because believe it or not, e- even in Greenwich, as high as the taxes are, we're still low. Compared to a lot of the state, and the state legislators, when they're looking to grab money, they turn around and they say, oh, look at Greenwich here, you know, they're at. Richest in the county and this and that, and look at their taxes, they're five thousand dollars less than somebody someplace else, let's grab another thousand.
Right, there's only one, I mean, that's about in a hundred and. It's higher than us.
Tewksbury. And we flew out of Worthwater by like twenty thousand.
I would have never thought that.
Mass, no, right. Well, and that's bad, and with that being said, just, uh, the, the reason why that's so important is even at, when we were at a hundred and twelve thousand. The federal government was building fire departments right and left, if your community wasn't wealthy. Well, we've never been eligible for that money right from the work, and that was back in one twelve. Five years ago, Joe, give or take, maybe, you know, so. God bless all those that are making that coin, but, woo, it, it does impact the, the government, school and us.
So I guess we shouldn't complain about our court costs.
No, no.
Alright, I'm not known, I'm done.
Hi, Brian, what you got for us?
Uh, March sixteenth is gonna be, um, the icon, waiting to hear.
Oh, okay, alright, March sixteen.
Eleven AM.
And that's a Saturday?
With the rain day, the following day?
Yes, rain day, following day.
Would they push that up a little bit, though? Does it not interfere with churches and such? And is recreation gonna reach out to the rest?
Yes, what's an icon?
Let's see, I'm asking right now.
What is this we're talking about? I'm sorry.
Easter icon.
Thank you, that's all we needed.
Not in the rough, but concession stands start to winterize until April first, we looking to have that open.
Rich hasn't talked to you?
What's that?
Rich hasn't spoken to? You just put in there, we will need to have the snack stand open, uh, and have the water turned on if possible. Is it possible?
I just hope that the weather don't, that there, we can still get some cold days.
Yeah, we can.
How easy it is to just shut the water off after if need be?
It's a day, days work.
That's a bunch, right.
And then charge the water system that charges the yard hydrant. And we gotta open them and blow them out. Get an air tunnel in there or that'll expand and break those pipes.
How essential is that stand gonna be?
Mushrooms in their concession stand to whatever they need to do inside the kitchen, I don't know what all they do for Easter.
They do like hot chocolate, stuff like that, I mean.
Easter, Easter's been in April.
That's not, I totally forgot, I'm like, uh, I looked at the calendar just now, um. I would say. Play it by ear and I, I think if we, we think it's gonna be cold, you don't.
The building itself's got heat, I'm not concerned about that, so even if I have to shut the water down, I don't have to, I don't have to. Winterize the whole bill, cause it has heat and I don't, I don't think we'll see some zero to three days, but I will. Get an air pocket into that yard hydrant system, so we don't create a big sinkhole. For the spring support.
Okay.
That, that'll be.
Direct them and just tell them.
That may have to be a last minute decision.
I get, I get the weather works report to a week, six, ten days.
Instead of repairing everything, right?
Right.
That's about it, that's, uh, signups for lacrosse, softball, baseball are still, uh, available on the, the website. That's it.
Okay, um, only thing I'm gonna bring up briefly is, uh, zoning. Although I didn't notice if Jeff's report was in here, was it Lisa?
No.
No, okay, but with that being said. Just briefly and not getting into a lot of details because it's just not. Very challenging to enforce zoning rules, period across the board.
Oh, boy.
Um, it, not as easy. Right, we had, we just have such a couple of problems, um, in the, uh, uh, in the community that. Favors people who just don't wanna play by the rules. And, uh, you know, that's all the more I'm gonna say on the subject matter, but, um, it'll all come to light in a little while. But, uh, there's some problems there and we're probably undermanned and understaffed in the zoning department to, to deal with it. But we're gonna be discussing that down the road also, but, uh, that's it on zoning.
So why should that be any different than, uh, what's happening in our society today?
Well, you beat up a cop and you, you kick him in the head and then you.
You're out.
You're out. Right. Well, like, what's even worse is how you can provoke. An officer.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I just, I, I, God bless those guys, you know, be getting those First Amendment people all the way up in your face, that's amazing. I would not have the.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, I wouldn't have it, yeah, so, but. Alright, professional reports, Michael, would you like to go first? Well, both Michaels. Penelope?
After you, no report.
Well, actually, we've got questions though.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I don't really have a whole lot myself. We already covered, uh. We already covered the DOT grant, so, um, that's, that's off the, uh, agenda for me. Uh, Baby's Road, in an effort to try to close those two out, we. We still need to get the bill from the guy, real contractor, so we can pay him, so we can close the project out. The DOT has been out, inspected, uh, inspected the road, uh, it's passed, so it's. It's getting a bill, paying a bill, and then we can close out the, uh, big deck brand, or those, actually two brands.
Make sure you get his W nine first.
Yes, well, we, they, obviously with the co-op, yes, well, we will get that, um. And I guess Comcast, as I'm sure. You're aware in some capacity, they have been working now for about three weeks or so since they were here last month. I actually emailed them today, uh, Al Beckett, if you remember, the one fellow that was here, they did most of it walking. Um, and I said, are you coming tonight to Greenwich? Because if you remember how it was left, when they were gonna be. Potentially needing to open up one of the moratorium roadways, they would have to come here, present options and so forth. So I said, well, and he said, no, he says, were you expecting me? I said, no, I said, but remember, they only meet once a month. Once a month, so he's like, well, right now, Mike, we're not expecting to need to open up. Very many of those areas at all, they did a little more homework and I think they can get around it, which is, which is good.
Right.
Uh, if that's really the way it plays out, that's, that's a win-win, you know, might be a little more work for them, but so be it.
Right.
So, I mean, that, I mean, obviously a project's underway, it's gonna be, you know, they're gonna be out there working for months and months.
So, there are some complaints that are crawling and rolling in right now, Brian's probably shouldering the most of them. And, 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 and there's no easy fix, and the problem is, there's two problems. One of which is, and I don't know where the fault lies there, is. The residents don't know anything about this project, and they're getting noticed two to three days in advance, that Comcast is about to come and. Rip up some of their front yard.
That's only applies, they're not getting noticed, and there, one resident, uh, came home the next day and his yard's ripped apart.
Well, I, I've been told, and again, Mike would have to clarify this, that they're going door to door.
Alright.
With information, can they leave something? Well, I thought they were.
Well.
Nothing was wrong.
I, it's my understanding that, that they are dropping off those little flyers, remember that guy had one, as a matter of fact, that he brought, no, no. He gave me one, we ended up having a pre-construction meeting and he gave me a, a one, I don't have it.
Well, the guy said we were dropping in a pre-construction, have way more information than everybody else.
Yeah, probably, yes.
Mike, can we set up a meeting? I would like to be involved.
No, no, sure, Brian.
And have them come here, or it could be on the phone, um, I'd rather them here, so we can go through some of the, because I'm getting emails. Talking to Paul more, because he knows the landscaping and know, I think we just have to educate the residents on what's going on. Because right now their yards are being ripped up, and they just think it's a done deal, they're not coming back. And I mean, there's some landscape issues, um, and I would like to meet with them and just discuss what we can do to.
What's your availability during the day, Ryan?
Yeah, I'll make it happen.
Alright, well then, why don't, I will, I'll email them. Right now, like actually, right, when I'm, when I'm done, I'll try to email and we maybe set something up before me, so.
My recollection was that they weren't allowed to do any digging without coming here first and getting permission.
Well, they know.
The right of way. I'm calling in someone's yard, but it.
But I mean, but even if it's the right of way, they only have the right to dig in the right of way, so my impression, and I know Lisa just said that we know, I think they were talking about the right of way, but. Our resolution says if they're going to do any digging, and it didn't say in the right of way or outside the right of way, and because they only have a right to dig in the right of way. They don't have any right to dig outside. I think they are only digging in the right of ways. But but I think, I think you, the intention of the committee was that if they were gonna do any digging, because when they first came in here, they said. Oh, no, we're not gonna have to do any digging, and if we had to pour under the road, they were gonna do that, whatever that.
The bore, the bore.
Well, I, I think what it is, is that, that the bore or whatever you wanna call it, is creating. A a a lot more. Ground damage than what one would uh, uh, think, it's not like they're coming in there with backos and things of that nature, it's pretty much this bore. And this machine is.
And the pits. What is the problem, where they are definitely dig excavating?
Okay, I might be wrong, but like I said, the resolution said any digging, they had to come back and get township approval, and my impression was. Well, look, the only thing they have a legal right to do is dig within the easement, so, and when they first came in. They said that, oh, no, no, we're not gonna do that, and then if we ever did, we'd come back, and then I think they said something a little different the last time they were here.
Yeah, because they presented that map of.
Shrubs, which they, they said, you know, last month or two months ago, whenever they were here, that they weren't gonna do, they, they've taken plants out, they. Ripped up landscaping, the fabric, that's where we have to have a meeting, also. So if they're digging, okay, in the right of way, but now they're transferring the dirt and putting it in someone's yard over the right of way, are they able to do that?
Yeah, and that was gonna be the big question.
And they're doing that, Mike.
The boring machine today was twenty foot into somebody's yard. Yeah, I mean, it was, it was way off the road, it 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 was on the corner of a, a Williver Way and Carpenter, and the boring machine was. Maybe twenty's too much, but I'll bet you every bit of fifteen, and I'll bet you that easement. What is the easement, ten ten?
It, well, you referenced Stewart's Hunt. It's ten, it's Stewart, it's Stewart's Hunt, and and almost all of like that era of development. It's a thirty-two foot wide road and a fifty-two foot right of way, which makes for third, you know, ten and ten on both sides. Now, that's gonna vary, like your development, of course, is gonna vary, um. And it's gonna vary a little bit, Greenwich Chase wouldn't inform, because that, that thirty-two fifty-two thing did not apply there. Um, but, but again, yeah, but it's still for the, for the vast majority of roads, it's, you have a ten feet.
What's Chase and Wyndham, though?
Oh, no, I think there's ten feet, but it's not a thirty-two foot wide road, it's a thirty foot road, so, it's thirty fifty.
They're probably within the ten ninety percent of the time. You know, now that we know what that is, but they're.
They're going over it.
They are going over it.
Well, okay, I'll, I'll talk to my, talk to my boys and uh.
He, he sent me some pictures and I know they're over and they're, and they're just doing whatever, and it's not okay.
No, and usually you get, when you have an easement, and then you're gonna have to put soil or whatever else, you get a temporary construction easement to put dirt or whatever else. And then you have to agree to move.
And that's what I was trying to tell him earlier, yeah, that's.
Well, they know, eh eh, for what it's worth, I mean, they're operating here in, in, end of January, and now it's February. Where, where they have had to dig to open up a pit. Um, and, and then, you know, they take the, the sod off as best they can, or they move it, and then they put it back. They know, they, they definitely know, there, a lot of this stuff is not gonna take and it's gonna die, and they're gonna come back, and you know, so. And people going to hear that, you know, this snow melts and all of a sudden, everybody sees their.
Income levels, a lot of people spend a lot, and and Paul would know this as well, people spend a lot of money on, on the yards. And now they're going over that, um, I just know it's gonna be more of an issue. And this is only one develop.
Well, again, you guys get together and talk to them.
So if we can, thank you.
Oh, sure, no, I'm sure, we can.
That's got it, okay. Alright, Michael, you said you had no report, however. How are we, have we gotten the letter out to Madison Properties and Shammy Shine?
I'm gonna talk to you about that.
In executive?
The letter's ready to go, it's just, there is a number that the assessor put on it, and we have to discuss whether that's a minimum bid or whether.
Got it. Uh, okay, so, let's go to old business then. Leonard Sewer, uh, actually, Michael, this one would be for you too, um. Joe and I were talking, um, and, and we don't seem to have an ordinance or anything covering. What exactly the homeowner is, we, in the areas that have a, a, a municipal sewer. What they're responsible for taking care of, in most of our surrounding communities, it is from the house to the hookup. And that seems to be the rule.
Pretty much the law, you know, that's, that's it.
Alright, but do we have that written down someplace? Because we can't find it.
I asked Dan Madden, he couldn't find it.
Well, that's all the way we have operated since we've got sewers, that if there's a problem from the house to the cleanout. At the connection point, which is typically near the sidewalk, um, homeowner's responsibility.
Right.
Cleanout to the sewer, it's, it's uh, obviously, it becomes uh, the downstairs problem.
Well, that's, that's not what we're hearing.
Some other towns, then, they're only responsible for the main, that homeowners at the main. From the main and.
Okay, well, hey, well, we, I've been a step removed from this, but. Let's say for the last X number of years.
Right.
But I know, trust me, it's, that has been from the cleanout, which is almost at the right of way. In many.
Sure.
The clean, you, so it's right away to right of way, which includes the lateral, go, so you hook into the main and of course the main.
Right, okay, so, what we probably should do then, Joe, is. Uh, and maybe my, reach out to Brent Carney, who's our specialist in that.
Yep.
And find out what his understanding of our system is, and to get an imprint.
Yeah, I've always, every town, it's always been the cleanout to the house was the homeowner's responsibility, now. And that could be statutory, I'll have to check that, but I'll check with Brent, but I think the thing is, it wouldn't hurt to have it in an ordinance, so that you don't have an argument, especially. But you know, on the what our status.
But Joe was saying, Alpha and Po Hat, it is from the homeowners out to the connection.
Out, out to the middle of the road.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, okay.
And T-bergs to the middle of the road?
Yeah, only because I had an issue last Thanksgiving from my sewer.
Okay.
It was in their main, which is their, but my responsibility as a homeowner is for my house.
So, if there's a, a, a clog, a break in the, in the. The lateral connecting to the sewer and you're in the road, you as the homeowner are responsible to dig up the road and fix it.
Well, I gotta get a.
Okay, that's why, that's why.
If it's not their main, then the rest is my responsibility.
Well, let's. You know, let's go to the specialist there. Because that's significant, you know, a homeowner having to take on a road opening permit and, you know.
Very significant.
Right, 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 so, okay.
And there is sewer coverage, because I get an advertisement at least two or three times a year. You know, for sewer coverage, that will cover from the house to the main, like fifteen, twenty dollars.
I do, and I have septic.
I know, I was gonna say, why are you getting that?
It's a thing now that that ensures that any water breaks, which I took that, you know, any pipes for any reason now, I think that's fifteen dollars a month.
But they always send me that advertisement for sewer, you know, I'd love to have sewer, you know. Preventative, right, pre-problem. We haven't had a problem yet, but we're trying to make sure if we have a problem, we are on the same page.
I know there's a number of these caps that that cleanout, that's all broken from landscapers and stuff, but if this cleanout is ours. That means we should be out there fixing them, because you're getting water infiltration in this sanitary sewer system. That was a big issue, freshwater uh, infiltration into there. So if you're saying it's that cleanout, it's town's property, I bet you I got a hundred of them broke out there.
We need to find that out, Mike.
And that's without capital.
Right, right, so, again, it's just something that we're trying to be a little proactive here on, because it kinda cropped up. We haven't had a problem, but let's not wait.
Well, a few times I've been involved with a break, or a, a clog. Sometimes it's been between there and that.
Right.
But they've had it cleared, the Rutter River people.
And and with that being said, I certainly recall one up on Jackson, and that, I believe we ate the bill, and the clog. Was actually from the cleanout to the main, if I remember right, something like that, and I gotta tell you, they. That was some serious scratch, no road had to be opened, but I think it was twelve, fourteen hundred dollars to have. Chapman, or whoever they use. Come out cleaning. Right, 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 so, let's, let's figure that one out. Okay, and the other one's going there, so that's good, alright, so let's go out to old business, um, and I'll try to make this brief without being long. Only because it's snowing again and it's back in our intention, Lisa, did we, I know that we have an ordinance that says you have to have, after twenty-four hours, you have to have your sidewalks cleaned and stuff. But we didn't, we didn't really put in the mechanism for the town to send out the DPW. To go clean them walks after twenty-four hours, and a mechanism to bill. Uh, the homeowner, like we do when we have to mow their grass and things of that nature, correct?
I mean, the property maintenance that we have takes so long, it wouldn't make sense with snow.
Well, no, well, that's what I'm saying, we can't go through that process, but you only have twenty-four, but we need to put a mechanism in there. That says twenty-four hours later, Joe can send his team out to shovel it, so, and then we're able to bill. The, the homeowner, the taxpayer.
Yeah, I do remember uh.
But I don't think we did that, so we should probably get back to, it's not something that'll be ready this year. Obviously, because you know, the ninety days and this, that, and all that other kind of stuff, but unfortunately, I've seen quite a bit of it this year. But again, it's snow, you know, and where I'm seeing it is almost people who don't know the rules. But, you know, we have to figure out how to get them, and I'm gonna go all the way back to Comcast, uh, for just a brief second. Part of the problem with, what we're gonna have with the homeowner, is as a commu, as a township, we've still never really come up with a way to be able to communicate. With the residents, we talked about this several years ago, about email blasts and this and that, but unless you're coming to a meeting or you're watching this meeting. There is nobody that knows Comcast is coming into the community and about ready to rip up your yard, I'm not quite sure. Eh eh, who's at fault for that, but that's something that, again, we still need to address, because. For the, for the next six, seven money, months, this is gonna be a problem.
I'm gonna tell you something I learned in one of my other towns, oh, we can do it later, but, but they've, they've got an app, it's Oxford, just the town in question. They have an app and I don't have it yet, but. Eh, it's available to every resident, free, eh, there's no charge, and, and it constantly. Has updated information, so that to me seems like, and the mayor of Oxford, uh, follow what he meant, Jerry Norton, if anybody knows him. I'm sure Mike knows him, um, eh eh, it couldn't like be happier with this new. I don't know the name of the, of the, of the.
Because it's better than having people rely on just coming to our website.
Yeah, I mean.
An email blast or text message blast, you know, something, but again, I think we need to get back on that trail and figure that out.
The problem was always that those are operable.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, there was a problem if I now that you remember right.
Unfortunately, if a resident wants to be informed, that gives their email address, and somebody can offer that information.
Right, so, that's why we ruled out that, but this app sounds like.
I don't wanna interrupt, but we did, uh, Joe had presented probably about a year ago, that upcoming rave system. And we are signed up for that, we have not really utilized, but you used it once, right?
But doesn't that only go to if you only have a hard line?
Or if your cell phone to register.
Or register, so, alright, so they would have, you would have to sign up. Yeah, somehow or another, right.
The problem is, you have to sign for that, or they're not going to the website to see what's going on, I mean, they're gonna have to go to the, you know.
Right, right, well, we, we don't have the, the, the perfect solution at this stage, but it requires everybody to kinda do something. And let's face it, Bill and Doris come to a lot of meetings, and I'm not quite sure this gentleman is, but we don't have people here, sitting here. Getting this information, it's kind of tonight, getting this information out, I mean, we all know, you know, but it stops right here. Right, 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 right.
I'll fall with the new municipal building and my electronic sign out on.
There you go. Do a little bit better at it, so, okay, alright, so with that being said, Lisa, that's something that we need to work on. Alright, uh, new facility update, how are we working on that? What do we know? Nothing new? Twenty people got the bid packages?
I have some, uh, last Thursday, um, Tom Pugley, Ed Hughes from North Star, the engineer, and myself met with the county planning office. There was, we had conceptual approval, they had a couple of questions, we explained the stormwater detention area. There, because they asked, because it's a little bit different design, it's somewhat a spillover setup, and the engineer designed it to mimic. This existing situation up there now, if it rained on the ground, it would disperse. They seemed pleased with it, so, right now it's conditional, which we gotta, he's gotta send that back to Soil Conservation. Get dirt okay, once they got that okay from them, plan, the planning department's good. And there's going to be an agreement come in the county, required if you're a member for the fire station, the warning signals. Like pedestrians, name is Thomas Stewart Park, they don't wanna own them, they don't wanna be responsible for them, they're gonna send an agreement to. Attorney Labor's Office for the township to agree upon be responsible for the. Fire truck entering the roadway in an emergency silence.
And how much?
When that's all done.
How much is that unfunded mandate gonna cost?
Well, they, them signs are in the bid package, they, they were under the, what you call, we knew about that, so that was added, so it's just. I'm maintaining the crosswalks at both Greenwich uh, Wyndham Farm and Greenwich Street, and when there's any issues at Thomas Stewart Park. Signs blowing off and that, Twiston, we've been taking care of it in our regular daily routine.
Joe, there's the same type of crosswalk at the, at the.
For, it's for no crosswalk required, but fire apparatus with warning lights.
That's, okay. Yeah, I was thinking, I, I was just shocked if they were, if they were gonna let you have a crosswalk, okay, I got it.
No crosswalk, it was the warn, warning signs for the fire trucks entering the roadway.
I, I got a call, as a matter of fact, from the county engineer about the drainage design for the firehouse. And as we all know, I've been steps out of the loop on, on, on the project. Maybe in, in this particular case, it was probably a good thing, so, I. I got the, the, the drift of his call and what he was trying to get at, like, pretty quickly. So I tried politic and say all the right things to get him to have a level of comfort with the design. Which apparently he, he has now, terrific, okay, so, that's all good.
And he said, he said, as long as Soil Conservation reapproves it, we got their approval, just they tweaked it a little bit. Because of some questions they had, he said, it'll be fine.
And I see that, I'm assuming the market along Thomas Stewart Park was for Elizabeth Town Gas?
Yes, he, he told me about that, they. They're in delay mode of their own, of their own predicament, and that's. And that's, he pulled me aside and said that, said, Joe, the county's not delaying them. They were in a big bum rush and things didn't get marked out properly. They're, and they're addressing that with the county and the other underground utilities at this time.
Cause the reason is, how does Elizabeth Town Gas know where to officially run the line to?
What do you mean, up to the property?
Up to the, up to the building and the property, right?
That's where, that's where all poller plant. They're gonna come to the property line and then part of our contract will probably be the tie-in line.
Got it, okay.
Okay. Or they'll get a hold of them and finish the installation at that.
Okay, alright, cool. Uh, new business. Uh, do we want to move open public comment up to before we get to this? Well, that's what I'm asking, if we want to move it up before we get to all this. I I see we have, I don't know if the gullians or this gentleman has anything to say before we go through all of this second stuff, or if this is of any interest to him. Um, so would we like to move public comment up?
We can move it up.
Yeah, we're not, okay. So let's have a motion.
I'll make it.
Second.
Do we need our own call on this, or? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, open public comments.
No, I don't think I have any.
Thank you for doing that. I appreciate that. I've only been here once before. Robert Becker, Mr. Lavery, nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
I am owner manager of the Shockey Greenwood. Napa Mall. Napa, okay, so I'm here to ask for some help and share a problem. Not the town, but something we we have some ideas, we need some help. But if I may, um, just with the agenda, you have a lot of your plates, um, just put out a couple of ideas. The town that I live in uses Nixle, N-I-X-L-E. Um, you spoke about reaching out to the community. Our police chief, um, managed to reach out because it's a shared service between police ID, and it's very short. And I don't, and I think it is, can be offered very easily in terms of, because it's just a one-way broadcast, right? And I don't have, I have my cell phone listed here through Nixle. A road closure, a school closure, the county's redoing the bridge, or weather event, we get them. So it might be something to help out in communication. Share that. Obviously, your work you do there. But I thought about that because if you back through this meeting, it's not why I'm here, but there's a lot of things that you're 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 working on that maybe can come together is with Comcast, the evil empire, I do. Are they doing utility markouts when they do the digging? Basically, eight-one-one, is it they are?
Yes.
Then the homeowners should be seeing flags, are they not? Cause and I'm asking the question, no answer necessary, but wouldn't that be a red, a flag, no pun intended, to saying, hey, something's going on here? But that might be something that, hey, Nixle, uh, Stryker Road is being worked on, this, yeah, power outage there, so I'll, I digress. Leave it there. And the what, what, third question about private and sewer lines. Not knowing the full subject, but this gentleman, I think, let you go. Of whom pays for the sewer line? I have a question on a commercial property now, which maybe we could follow up later, is from our sewer lift station to there is, will the town pick that up? God forbid something happen. I don't want you to. I think that we have to deliver it out to the the main. That's my view, but I'd expect and hope that township would clarify something on a commercial basis too. So, cause that the residential seems to be, we don't know where it stops. And Miss Quick, I think you said your town goes to the main, as a taxpayer here, that's where it should go. Gas lines and water lines go there. Oldwick Sewer Authority, Mr. Salaji might be more aware. With Mr. Lavery's cup partner, but they actually, you can do emergency road permits to do a sewer line repair from the center of the road or wherever the road in the town to that homeowner, and it's on their dime. Uh, there's ways to address that. Maybe just defer to these the professionals. But that, don't, please don't shift it to the taxpayers, to the, to the gentleman, Mr. Joe. If you break the sewer cap, there's water coming into the sewer line. So that is an issue that the homeowner doesn't really care about, because the landscaper's just trashing it. So it's gonna be constantly that he's going out and fixing a hundred of them. Push it to the homeowner, please. They'll do it. And you can, that that's my opinion as a taxpayer through the Napa Mall. The matter at hand that I care, um, it might be near complete report and stuff. January, we're here to ask for some help. We'd like to ask for some additional signage south of the road. On January twenty-sixth, we had two events, tractor trailers using our front parking lot as a U-turn. One of them was about six o'clock, six fifteen at night, huge amount of people in traffic on the mall. Busiest act, and the weather was, it was marginal. We had it at eight after midnight that same day too, Friday. Nobody was there, but caused property damage both times. Sign was down in the evening, the large, large boulder was literally driven over and driven into the entrance. We have pictures, I shared them with Detective Cratchin already and stuff, and he's just tried to research the tractors. The numbers we have, that some of them are blurry and be candid, we're still working on it. Two thousand dollars worth of property damage. Is there something that the town can consider, even recognize it's a county road? South of us, divert people up Stryker's. Stop them from coming here. I see coming to this meeting tonight from fifty-seven, there's a weight limit sign. Maybe it's an idea to put and consider a weight limit north of Stryker's Road and local delivery only, obviously. So I'd like to put that out as a problem. And if there's a solution, present it. If there's signage, some costs, if we stop this, we can stop. But we'd like to have some better ordinances for the township police to enforce and penalize some con dollar consequences to stop the U-turns. And if there's some signs or strings that need to go south, we'd be willing to contribute something, but we obviously, that's a future discussion. We're not just dumping it on you. We don't want it for the safety issue. We don't want it for the property damage issue. And it's all because of the warehouse that went in on Stryker's, convinced. So I'm asking for help. Robert Becker, I think Miss Bird and I spoke on this a prime over the year. I have my contact information. So that's, that's the real reason I came to my affairs office. And I do kind of have nine O and a consent, because Stryker's Road, one-way traffic. Uh, you guys might, and ladies might just pass the consent, but might you just carve that out to speak about nine O and nine N? I'm sure what the public comment statement is and what the Stryker's Road one-way is, because that might change the conversation. So that's my ask regarding the signage south of our mall. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have anything for public comment? Seeing nobody?
I'll make a motion close.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay. So just briefly, Mr. Becker, and we'll take everything you said under advisement, but one of the first things that you can do um, is put a a a sign that says no trucks, no U-turn on your property. They're gonna, not gonna see it until they're turning in. Um, I don't want to say it takes an act of God to get something done on a county road, but it's not far from it. Uh, you know, it's a little challenging. Um, and and as for whether we get the the trucks to divert to the left up there or not, the the bottom line is, sure, the the truck volume is certainly up. And but trucks have been planting themselves in the tunnels for years. No amount of signage seems to stop that. And I, and and I'm I'm sure that's gonna be the case regardless. There's gonna be a certain percentage that are 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 just not, I mean, we have those weight limit signs up and everything else like that. Despite what the efforts that our our police department and signage does, a couple hundred trucks use that regardless of what the signage says. So the signage is not necessarily the answer. Um, but we'll try to talk about it and focus on your 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 issues. But again, one of the first things that you can do is just write up there as soon as they come in. Uh, no, no U-turn, no tractor trailers, no trucks. I know Rats used to have one there and a tractor trailer took it out. But Matt didn't put it back up, you know, and that was his own sign, so, um, but maybe that will at least avoid a couple of situations for you, maybe.
I just spoke to them yesterday, so they're not happy either.
Yeah, again, and I not to come up with a solution, but just ideas in terms of, sorry. Is, um, if some of you might have driven in some of the parkways in Westchester County, the Hutchinson, the Swannell, and they have very, they have arched bridges that have low, they're they're not made for buses or trucks, right? And some of the entranceways, particularly on the hutch, is they actually have optical sensors, costly. Not asking to spend and saying, as you have conversations, Mr. Penelope's conversations, probably you'll ask him to maybe do this with the county. And the county engineer, there might, that protects the underpass as well. And that's intentionally why they do it at the hutch and other places. They have the optical sensors placed, big bright sign stuck, you've got to exit this and that, so. I don't know what it costs, but there may be other ways to do it, because it also protects the.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Okay, um, the chief just stepped out, so we'll go, not go back to that. Um, let's go to Resolution twenty-eight, twenty-four. Um, as you all can see, we needed to shift some money around to pay for the court. So can we, well, I guess we can do, Mike, can I do all those with the lien redemptions still at the same time? Alright, so I'd like to do, get a motion on twenty-eight, twenty-four, twenty-nine, twenty-four, thirty, twenty-four, thirty-one, twenty-four, and thirty-two, twenty-four. And those last four resolutions all involve a a ta- redemption for people who have paid up a tax lien on the properties. Or or not necessarily a lien, but they paid some back taxes from a sale or something of that nature, right, Lisa? Right? Questions, comments? Lisa?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Okay, next. We have a resolution thirty-three, twenty-four. And that is for, that was some new, you know, it was dropped in here. Um, a grant, a recreation grant application for sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand uh, dollars to make park improvements to Reinhardt Park behind us. Um, again, it's been a park for a long time, the playground equipment. You know, it's seen some better days. Joe, is the steel slide still there? No, I didn't, I thought that one was gone. I gotta tell you, as a kid growing up around here, that that burnt. But we loved it. But anyway, uh, so there's a grant, uh, uh, that we're applying for to do that. So with that being said, I'd like to get a motion to apply for this recreation grant.
I'll make the motion.
Questions, comments?
I wanna do, uh, just thanks Lisa, um, Joe, um, Frank Pinto for, you know, coming up with this pretty quick. We're gonna do this in like a couple of days, a week.
Who did?
Uh, fast, okay.
Yeah, I mean.
He's the new sage expert.
Yeah, so they were.
He's the new expert?
Frank.
Right.
But thank you.
Thank you, sir. For everything you do.
Alright, uh, okay. Roll call?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yeah.
Okay, uh, we need a motion to approve the second reading on ordinance number one oh one.
Oh, I need to interject into this one. This this actually was not advertised, and I I I did want to try to follow up before the meeting, but we didn't really have an opportunity. When we had introduced this, um, to, I guess, last month. Um, we thought it solved all the problems, but I defer to chief, did you end up getting to talk to Wade or to Mike about the possibility of adding the tiered penalties?
I sent the email to Wade.
We weren't sure if there was some confusion. As you guys can recall, I I, it was one of those situations where, um, and I think particularly related to the truck tickets, that if you do it again, you know, that there should be a tiered penalty. And we realized that this doesn't do that, and we thought it was most appropriate to maybe include it in this one. So to spare the expense, I did not advertise this one, so we're just basically not the table this till next time. Um, and then.
We'll re- have to reintroduce, because that's gonna be the tier of the government, right, it'll be a significant change. Alright, so we'll do that next meeting.
No.
Okay, fair enough.
This helps, but it doesn't solve the problem.
Alright, uh, we also need to have a motion on the second reading of ordinance one oh two dash two oh two four. Amending the chapter twenty-nine and title hazard of substance cleanup.
Maybe it's open to public hearing in that one.
We do, okay. So, alright, at this time, it, I'd like to open public hearing on the second reading. Uh, I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Uh, all in favor? Alright. Anybody wanna comment, opine on the second reading or that ordinance? Seeing none, uh, motion to close?
I'll make the motion.
Second, all in favor?
I agree.
Okay, uh.
Adopt it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to adopt it.
Oh, okay. I'll second. Twenty, twenty-four.
Okay, uh, Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes. Okay. Uh, Stuart's Fire Department, I see some new members. Uh, Kyle Brown, who was a past member, is reapply. Lee Strauss, our firefighter, Shane Skidary as a cadet. Um, and blue light applications for Philip Snyder, Jason Coulteron, is that how that's pronounced? Coulter John and Steven Schmidt. Um, do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
Could I get a motion on that, please?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions?
Thank you very much.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes.
Okay, Lisa, now we're coming up to the appointment for Lisa Byrd as a temporary Land use board secretary, because our current Land use board secretary is going out on maternity leave. She's due to have a child sometime in March. So we're being proactive here to have Lisa step in as the temporary zoning officer. Uh,
Zoning officer.
Or I mean, I Land use board secretary. And, uh, uh, hopefully not lasting more than a period of two months, but we're not sure at this particular time.
So is this motion will be open-ended then?
Uh, no, well, I was gonna like just read something for you guys. This is, I had spoken to our rich winner, our labor attorney, and essentially because the position is so part-time, um, she's not eligible to take this leave of absence technically. So normally with like family medical leaveback, you're allowed to take up to twelve weeks off, unpaid, et cetera. Um, but our requirement, or I guess the state requirement, uh, is that in the past, previous twelve months, you've worked twelve hundred and fifty hours. So for that reason alone, she doesn't qualify. We do want to be accommodating. And because I am a planning board secretary in my other town, we have somebody in-house that's qualified. So a determination was made that if the governing body would, so you know, choose to, we could make an exception. Um, and also, I I should have prefaced this by saying she waived her rice, her her rights of rice notice, because, you know, normally we can't uh, speak specifically about an employee. Um, so we have that as well. Uh, but essentially, the terms of this would be, um, that for March and April, she will not be working. And and if you guys choose to appoint me, I will cover her position for the next two months. Uh, and then in May, she would like to work remotely and attend the meeting. So again, if you guys are so inclined to do that, you could just make a motion to that effect on the record, and then I will draw this up into a letter to her, and she and I will both sign it so that we're all in agreement. Uh, part of this is to just not, you know, set a precedent um, to get us into a, you know, a bad situation, but also again, because, you know, if we didn't have somebody qualified to cover the position, we wouldn't be able to hold it. We would have to hire somebody. In this particular situation, I'm qualified and I'm willing to, uh, cover to help her out, so. So instead, I'd like to make that open. And I'd like to thank Lisa for stepping up. Who allows to be able to accommodate her.
Couple busy months coming up too.
John better be quick.
Alright, with that being said, any more comments or questions? Alright, Lisa, roll call?
Uh, Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
And Mr. McDermott? Yeah.
Okay. Uh, municipal bill cleaning. Currently, um, the DPW is taking care of it. Um, and it's not part of their job description per se. Um, there's been a couple of suggestions, but the first thing that we'd like to do is put this back out to bid and see what the actual costs of hopefully a better company than what we had and what it's gonna cost to do that, so we can make some comparisons. Hopefully a better company than what we had, and what it's gonna cost, uh, to do that, so we can make some comparisons. So I'd like to make a motion to put the, uh. Maintenance, the cleaning and the maintenance of the buildings out to bid.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it. Any questions or comments? Lisa?
Uh, Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yeah.
Mr. McDermott?
Yeah. Okay, in your packets, there's a, Lisa's given us something in respect to. The dog census and licensing, which we've already approved. Uh. Tammy Hill going out and doing the census. Um. But what Lisa's suggesting. And Lisa, I'm not finding it here, but.
And, uh, it was part of my, uh.
Oh, it's part of yours.
And it's really for discussion purposes, if you guys want to think about it and let me know, we're not ready for a census, but it was just an idea.
Right, well, basically, i- i- is she, what Lisa wants, correct me if I'm wrong, is if we find people who. Have dogs that haven't registered, giving them the amnesty for twenty-twenty-three, and making them pony up for twenty-twenty-four. And then that officially puts them on the records for the following.
Right.
You know, that we're not gonna charge them a penalty or anything of that nature. Um, so that's what she's suggesting.
Approach to get people to, uh, be in compliance moving forward. Uh, we have registered like a hundred and twenty dogs this year, and there's probably fifteen hundred out there. I don't know, there's gotta be a lot.
Well, mathematically, there's a formula for it, and it's nowhere near. Right, 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 right. So, the, the, the numbers aren't adding up, and, and unfortunately, i- i- the, the licenses don't cover everything, but. You know, we're spading a lot of furrow cats and this and that, and, you know, so. It just helps, e- e- even animal control numbers and stuff like that.
Right, and taxpayers that don't have pets shouldn't necessarily be contributing to the cost that we.
Could to the cost, right.
Required to.
But, with that being said, you are, so, uh, hopefully if we could get all the dogs registered, maybe you won't.
Right.
Um, so.
And we discussed having cats licensed. Why aren't we looking into that? They do it in Broward and Township, they have to do cats as well.
I don't know.
I, I think they should be.
Yeah, I don't necessarily have a problem with it. I don't know that I'm ready to, to communicate.
Well, will some do what?
You ought to see that furrow cat population in Stuartstown. Um, so. With that being said.
Is it really a policy decision? I mean, like, there's plenty of towns that have it, and there's plenty of towns that don't. And people have strong opinions on both sides, so.
My, my only suggestion would be that if we move that direction, that we, you know. Separate a position out for that and give some sort of a stipend for that, because that's gonna be a much bigger job. You know, right now, Tammy does this, you know.
The dogs, right?
The weight of the dogs, but a hundred and twenty is no big deal. You start doing fifteen hundred.
No, right, right.
There's not enough hours in the day.
Right, right. So, with that being said, let's, let's table the cat portion of the conversation for now, and, you know, we can revisit it, you know, let's just put it in under old business.
And again, if we, if, if they're all registering, it would pay for itself.
Right, right. Let's get the dog thing fixed first, because I was gonna say, I'm sure there's a formula. That'll tell us how many cats live in town too, you know, per residence, you know, I'm sure Rutgers has got some kind of number somewhere. That'll tell us that, and then somehow or another, I think that number on cats will be larger than dogs. But anyway.
I got a question from Mike Leibery. Is there any way that we can inquire at the local vet, you know, Dr. Zachio, and then this one up on, you know. Fifty-seven and ask them for a list of all their dog owners? In the oh eight 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 six?
We could ask.
Hipper violation?
I, you know, except, uh. I don't know the answer to that, but I don't know that they would surrender those, you know, for the same reason. Request for all the dog owners. So they have no.
They're giving up their clients then, they're going.
Right. There's no obligation that they have to turn.
Right. Is there something that we can give? To the vets here, you know. I noticed that his dog isn't registered yet. I don't see the little collar, you know, on their collar. Can we give them the, have them hand them the form and please?
I mean, that, you know. Ask them, but, you know, again, they're in the business of treating pets, right? So you're not treating, you're not, you're not greeted favorably when you say, oh, by the way. We could ask them, but I just don't think they're.
Right.
Alright, uh, municipal cleaning, dogs, that, we're talking about in public. Public comment statement, which is something that you already discussed, right?
Yeah.
Uh, Strikers Road, uh, one-way traffic. Well, we can certainly start to discuss it at this stage of the game, um, I know we've kind of batted around before. Um, a- and you can certainly. Well, I think what I was told is you want John Drill to look into.
Possibility.
The possibility thereof. And, and again, you could certainly make that motion and, and, and see how it goes, you know. I, I, I have a, a problem with that, only because. The. What attorney Drill is going to have to look at besides communicating with the county, the township, Lopecan Township. And even its DOT, because it, it affects Route fifty-seven. I just, I just think that. It's thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. To find out that you can't do it. And I don't know that you can't do it, but it's gonna cost an awful lot of money to find out that you can't do it. And I, I, and I believe you're talking that. One of the business owners is a little upset with the subject matter. I don't know that he's put enough, uh, they have put enough thought into it.
No, it's, it's, sorry, it's also the residents.
Well.
When they're seeing parked tractor trailers at night, and they don't feel safe, and you have other business owners, think it's time. Where, where, where the doormat right now for other towns, where we're just letting them do whatever, send their traffic towards us. It's time to look into it, and if just possible, I mean, we could cap the, the amount of money we're gonna spend. I think there's two more warehouses possibly going in that are invasive and destructive, and. But one of the Strikers Roads, the most destructive warehouse that I've seen in the area. It takes in the most traffic. There's no, there's no care for our town at all, or residents, or small business owners. And it's time to send it all back to the town that agreed to it, and they could figure it out.
Well, I, i- and I certainly understand your thinking, but. Uh, well, again, at, at this stage of the game.
Look at, look at the possibilities of doing it.
My thought is that, that your business that we're discussing, you're gonna cut half the traffic. Off from him.
Yeah.
And I, is that sustainable at that particular point? Um, I, I just find it, no matter which way you put it, is somebody traveling all the way down to fifty-seven to get to Strikers Road to go south? Or, uh, you're coming out of the business parking lots and going to fifty-seven to go north to get back to. You know, Greenwich Township. A- again, I'm only one vote here. You can certainly make the motion and stuff like that.
I'm more concerned with the residents.
Uh, a- and as for, and again, my thought on their. For the time, well, I think we've kind of done what we can. I mean, there's no parking signs up all there and everything else like that. It's a matter of enforcement. Um, I don't use that road nightly, so I'm not necessarily seeing, uh, tractor trailers parked there with any kind of regularity. Um, you know, I'm supposed.
Every Tuesday I've seen one.
Uh, well, again, you know, uh, so it's just one of those things, but I, I, I would just hate to see us spend.
I don't want to spend.
Thousands. I mean, a cease and desist letter from Attorney Drill's fifteen, eighteen hundred dollars. You know, just imagine the, what it would cost to do this investigation. Um. We might. Well, we, well, we only, only term a mile.
What is, what, where? That's one-way traffic on Strikers.
The whole road is what Brian's hoping.
Okay, which way you're going?
Well, that would have to be determined.
Determined by the engineers.
Oh, okay, so that's not, okay, I, I, I saw this, and I'm like, okay, I, okay.
He's just looking to see the possibility of.
There's two more warehouses going in, and we, we have a ma- major problem there, and the safety, you have kids going to Rita's. There's people posting all the time about the safety and, and the turns, and. I think, I can believe it, you know, we own the half, you know, not half the road, we own a small portion of the road, why don't we see what we can do?
So, I mean, you're more than welcome to, to make a motion on the subject matter.
I'll make the motion to, um, I guess, look into the possibilities. Of creating a one-way, uh, road on Strikers. And I guess.
Mike was just saying, he thought he'd already brought this up.
We have.
I thought we, either we did a memo or John might have done. Well, I think we've discussed.
I thought John said we could, but. We haven't had a definitive answer.
Okay, so you want to table the motion for this meeting while Mike looks into it?
Well, let's, let's just go through the motion, just to, if we have to hire someone, just look into it.
But what do we cap that at?
Whatever.
What do you think is who could end up though?
I'd have to defer to Mr. Leibery that kind of.
Look, I, I think John could probably give you an answer off the top of his head almost, so. It's, you know, I would just cap it a thousand dollars to be safe, but it'd be less than that, or send fifty, you know. I mean, I think we can just ask him, and he could say, well, look, I'm gonna have to do research, right, X, Y, and Z. I mean, John probably could tell us, but I mean, just to get it started, you could do, you know, whatever. Whatever the committee. Uh, it's like I said, I, 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 my recollection is, you know, we did a memo whenever John's office did a memo.
I know, we spoke about it.
Yeah, but, yeah, that I remember, but, um, yeah, I would just put a cap on it, whatever the committee thinks, but I think John will be able to.
Alright, I'll make the motion for a thousand dollars, the cap. Research into, um, creating a one-way road. On Strikers.
I'll second.
So, the discussion is, since we only, we only own what, quarter mile of that road?
Creating a one-way.
Creating a one-way on all of Strikers, because you can't just do it on that quarter mile.
Exactly, so what's the chances that Lopec's gonna go?
Uh, we, and that's what we have to check.
Well, I would, again, a- and I'm just speaking freely on the subject matter, I would think that. Lopec's certainly not gonna be in favor of it, uh, uh, by no means. The, the. Even though they're Lopec residents, the inconvenience to residents in general is gonna be huge, and I don't know that. We would even want to think about the potential lawsuits that may or may not arise. From trying to do something in Lopec on Township. I just see it as a, 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 just something that. Isn't gonna be able to be a- accomplished under. Any situation. And although a thousand dollars is not a, a monstrous amount of money to throw at it, um. That's just my opinion.
Well, hopefully his analysis will, yeah, will tell us, you know.
Right, one way.
Right, well, a- a- and again, he, he may tell us that for free.
Right, right.
Right, and it will put the issue of a one-way Strikers to bed.
Right, right, so, you know, so, alright, so Brian has made a motion, second.
And Lily and seconded.
And Lily and seconded. We've already had our discussion. Lisa, roll call?
And Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
No.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes.
Okay, uh, quote, donation bins, is this in reference to the Ambets ones up on, uh?
Uh, well, I think.
I mean, we've had conversations about them in the past.
Yeah, could we just send a letter to, um. I'm gonna ask for a motion to send a letter to the company, uh, it's, it's gotten out of control. Last couple of days, there's been, um, I don't know, bed frames.
It's a dumping ground.
It's, it's a dumping ground.
No arguments there, it's definitely a dumping grounds, and that's the people who, who pick up the clothing there are responsible. To clean it up, and there for a while, they were only cleaning up once every one to ten days. They clean it up regularly every two to three days now, as well.
It's a eyesore.
Well, it's an eyesore, but a- a- are we gonna jam up Toll Brothers and Ambets for people's bad deeds?
Can we ask them to move it to the back?
I'm, well, I mean, maybe a possibility of moving it someplace. I would certainly like to see Toll Brothers put up a sign. That says no dumping with our town ordinance on it, so that periodically our police officers might be able to do something about it.
Yeah, and, and.
Um. But, uh, a- and relocation of them, uh.
Any chance of putting cameras in that area?
Well, boy.
We could ask.
We could ask them, but I don't know that there's the right power, the setup, or.
Right.
Whatever, but we can certainly ask.
It's just that, you, you pull into that shopping center, it just looks.
No, no.
Nasty or. And I feel back, because it's, it's for good calls, but it's not being used for that purpose.
Well, the problem is, i- the garbage that they clean up ends up bringing the, the, it costs them. You know, there's a dumpster that they're throwing it into.
Right, right.
You know, so that the bottom line is the Ambets aren't getting the money they want because of the people that are, are dumping there.
So why, why don't we?
Money on these, uh, bins?
Pardon?
Some of them could.
Well, some, I'm a mayor here, I, 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 I'm not gonna comment on it. Bob Veterson can tell you more about the Ambets one, and. And, and, and I know what he's told me, but I don't want to be blurtin' hearsay, but I do know a lot of clothing bins are very profitable for a lot of people. Um.
So why don't we send them a letter? Asking for signage and our ordinance on it, and possibly a camera, I don't.
Alright, Lisa, can you, uh?
Speak.
Compose that letter? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. State the dumping ordinance, at least, you know. So, I always look forward to seeing somebody dumping, because I want to go and take some pictures.
Unfortunately, I've had that, and I'll tell you.
Tell you later.
I, I, I've actually got quite a few pictures of people dumping.
Yeah.
And I'm just like, oh, what are you doing? No, you, your phone, your complaint, your everything.
That is court costs.
They're right, right, you know, and, 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 I, I, again, it, it, it's an unfortunate situation. You know, I lump it into, you know, the people that are throwing things, you know, it's a small percentage of the population, but there it is.
Right.
But it's a small percentage of the population that's on their cell phone, small percentage of P L P L. Bob has talked about how we're becoming very. Anti, no, anti-rules.
Oh.
You know, I mean, not everybody, uh, with cell phones, speeding, rough, blow, yeah. It's all become kind of accepted, and everybody else is kind of left to pick up the pieces, and this is another situation of the same thing. I mean, I, I can't believe the volume of litter that's on the roads. I can't believe people throw that kind of stuff out.
Yeah.
When he's bad to McDonald's, I'm like, I'm just amazed by that, you know, I, I think back to the, the Indian. When I was in my youth, growing up in crime, you know, i- it's amazing how much litter gets thrown out, but people do that with no regard. Out it goes, so.
So, one, one other thing with the dumpsters. We have a dumpster in the back here. I don't recall it coming before the committee asking to, whoever put it there, what organization, I have no idea.
What is it?
Well, we got a dumpster. We have a clothing dumpster back here, I believe it's related to the police department, so Chief, would you like to speak on that real quick?
Yeah, I mean, it, we used to have the dare bin.
Yeah.
Over here in the corner. Um, when we got rid of there, we got the lead program, we never got, uh. Bins put in, we're going to go back here, uh, we actually. Went back to there now, and the bin is, uh, it's not just for there, though, it's, uh, for all our programs, so.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, when I was bringing it back there, I spoke to, uh, the mayor about it, and he said, yeah.
Yeah, and we had one before, so that's, yeah.
Okay, so Lisa's gonna send a letter to Toll Brothers.
Thank you.
And, and, and I guess one should go out to Ambets, and I think we already have that address, because I'm not quite sure which zoning officer. Over the last few years was the one that sent a letter out that got them to come out on a much more regular basis, um, but we may already have a contact number for them. Okay, number corresponds, we, not that we spoke about Mr. Carter's in general, but we talked about the problem in general, so we're gonna work on that. So with that being said, I'd like a motion to move us into executive session.
I make one, second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, and that's for twenty-five Village, New Jersey, DEP, well sealing ordinance pending litigation regarding eminent domain and the dioxin issue. I make a motion, oh, can I have a motion to come out of executive session, please?
I'll make the motions.
I'll second.
Mr. Bailey?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, Mayor, we emerged from executive session at eight fourteen PM, where we discussed, uh, turning client privilege matter dealing with New Jersey DEP well sealing ordinance. Pending litigation regarding eminent domain, um, the sale of township property and, uh, micro breweries. No official action was taken. Copies of these minutes will be available at such time as the committee determines there is no harm to the public interest. And then, Mayor, if the committee's so inclined, we'd need a motion to authorize the attorney to send the letters to the adjacent property owners, uh, discussed in the executive session. And then Mayor, if the committee's so inclined, we'd need a motion to authorize the attorney to send the letters to the adjacent property owners, uh, discussed in the executive session.
Second. Roll call?
Mister Bailey?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenneth?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
And the next Mayor, if the committee's so inclined, we need, uh, a motion to authorize the attorney to draft an amendment to the ordinance, uh, for the B one. Zone to permit microbrewers.
I'll make that motion.
B one or B two?
I think B one, I think B two incorporates all of the permitted uses of B one, so I'm thinking B one, but let's just, we'll say B one and B two.
And B two, yeah, okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Roll call.
Mister Bailey?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenneth?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
Could we even, in terms of doing B one, somebody wants to do it at fifty-seven? Be thrilled to death, right?
Yeah.
Okay, with that being said, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.